It is now ten AM on January thirty first. We're gonna call into session this regular session of Wood County Commissioners Court. It is our normal procedure to start each session with a word of prayer, and I believe Commissioner Pace has agreed to that duty.
Let's pray. Thank you Heavenly Father for this day you've given us. Thank you for all your many blessings. Thank you for this county we live in. Or we just pray that you will be with our country. And Lord, we just ask you to be with us as we deliberate on each one of these agenda items today. And we ask this blessings in your name. Amen.
Thank you Commissioner. Item number one on our agenda is public comments. Is there anyone in the audience today who wishes to address an issue pertinent to the court? Seeing no one come forward, we'll go on to item number two, which is consider approval of personnel actions. We do have three. The first one is from the Sheriff's Office, employee Brady Heath Richardson. This is a resignation from our CSCD employee Teresa Thorwald. This is a salary increase proposal. And also from CSCD employee Crystal Frittel. Again, a salary increase proposal. I would entertain a motion.
Don't move.
I motion by Commissioner Pace. Say goodbye Commissioner Holland. We approve today's personnel action forms. All those in favor? My motion does pass. Item number three is consider approval of payroll. We do have payroll dated to date today in the total amount of three hundred, three thousand, one hundred nineteen dollars, six cents. I would entertain a motion.
Say it to approve.
I motion by Commissioner Gaskell. Second by Commissioner Shirley that we approve today's payroll. All those in favor? My motion does pass. Item number four is consider approval of line item transfers and budget amendments. I find none in my pocket, in my packet, and I see my auditors shaking their heads. So we will move on to item number five, which is consider approval of claims. We have health and dental insurance claims in the adjusted amount of fifty-three thousand, six hundred eighty-one dollars, fifty-three cents. Accounts payable claims in the total amount of one hundred fifty-four thousand, three hundred twenty-four dollars, fifty-four cents. And direct claims paid in the amount of one hundred eighty-four thousand, two hundred fourteen dollars, sixty-five cents. And one voided check in the amount of one hundred forty-four dollars. I would entertain a motion.
Motion we approve.
Second.
I motion by Commissioner Holland. Second by Commissioner Gaskell that we approve today's claims. All those in favor? My motion does pass. Item number six is consider approval of maintenance agreement with JAVS for county court video recording system. You have in your packet copies, copies, excuse me, of the two proposals for the maintenance and support agreement on the JAVS equipment here in this court. If I have no questions, I would entertain a motion.
Don't move.
Second.
I motion by Commissioner Pace. Second by Commissioner Gaskell that we approve the maintenance agreement with JAVS for the county court video recording system. All those in favor? My motion does pass. Item number eight is consider approval, I'm sorry, item number seven is consider approval of Wood County Health Plan Insurance premiums for fiscal year 2014. And I have stuck that somewhere because I am not finding mine. I take that back. I have now found mine. You have in your packet a copy of the insurance premiums proposed for the fiscal year 2014. It does reflect the differential between the offering of the ETMC network versus the Turnin' Vee Mother Frances Network and all other changes we made in the health insurance. So if there are no questions, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Gaskell. Second by Commissioner Holland that we approve the Wood County Health Plan Insurance premiums for fiscal year 2014. All those in favor? My motion does pass. Item number eight is consider approval of continuation of the property insurance coverage with the Texas Association of Counties Risk Management tool for both Wood County and CSCD. You have copies of the proposed renewal applications on both the county as well as the Wood County CSCD in your packet. If there are no questions, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion we approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Holland. Second by Commissioner Gaskell that we approve the continuation of the property insurance coverage with the Texas Association of Counties Risk Management tool for both Wood County and Wood County CSCD. All those in favor? My motion does pass. Item number nine is consider approval of the Union Pacific Railroad's request for a narrowed county right-of-way and roadway section on County Road thirty-three seventy-five in Precinct Three. I will throw this to Mr. Pace for your comments.
Yes, in the past, we've met on this issue before. And the Union Pacific Railroad was requesting variance to the county right-of-way standard for approximately three hundred feet from the northwest corner of the property going eastward to allow the road right-of-way to be forty feet to match up with the existing county road. The remainder of the construction will be at standard county right-of-way standards of sixty feet wide. This variance is requested. Do not require the raising of an existing barn.
All right, Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments about that action? Again, I believe this is something that we had already voted on and approved as far as the expansion of the road. They have run into an issue where the property owners do not wish to have an existing structure destroyed, and we are trying to alleviate that possibility by this variance. And as long as Commissioner Pace has no problem with it, and we are willing to assume the maintenance of that section that allows for it, that is his choice, and I'll allow him to make that in the form of a motion if he so chooses.
I'll make that motion. Say it.
Yes ma'am.
Where's the property owner?
Please.
We're really against the way the property line's gonna be, the way the fence is gonna be flooded up right on our barn. And to us, we're, the barn, the way we use the barn is, it's useless if they build the road that way. So we don't really care. We can talk to them about the design of the way they have the fence, but to us, the barn is useless. It's literally on top of the barn, and we go in and out through the sides of the barn and stuff, and we store a lot of valuable equipment, you know, trailers, cars, vehicles, tractors up there. So just to let y'all know that.
Okay, we appreciate that input.
Oh, Lisa Moss. On the record though, I'm on the county as Lisa Welch.
Thank you, Ms. Moss and Ms. Welch. If we have no further questions, I would, we have a motion before us. Do I have a second?
A second.
All right.
Yes, please.
Well, so if the railroad was to put a sixty-foot right-of-way all the way through there and take out your barn, could they not move it back and build you a new barn to where you can access it and use it?
Well, that's what we would prefer, is to have a usable barn.
I mean, the way we use it today, we're not gonna be able to use it. I mean, we don't feel with crime in our area. I mean, we're giving up our privacy as it is because they're going through our property. Because as of today, the road ends at our property. So we just, we just don't think it's, you know, efficient and right for us to, you know, be exposed like that and stuff. And we would prefer to have the barn somewheres back away from the road and not literally inches onto the road, the way they wanna do it.
Well, Roger, what has the railroad said? Have they ever?
Tell me they offered to build them a new barn.
The railroad's trying to tell us that if they're doing everything to stop building, they have not offered to build us a new barn. They have not, Roger, they have not. So if they have done that, they've not told me that. I mean, if they, if you wanna leave the road the way it is and they're gonna, we will leave the barn there, if they wanna leave it that way and make that variance, if they're gonna build us a new barn. But no, he has not said, he's doing everything not to build us a barn. That's the reason he's cutting it out the way he's doing.
But if they did build you a new barn, it wouldn't be narrowed down. It'd probably be sixty-foot right-of-way all the way through, so it takes more of your land if they take your barn out.
I know, I know. But I mean...
Which you're stating is your preference.
Right, either way, I mean, if they build, if they wanna do the road the way they have it and they build us a new barn, I'm fine with that. We'll leave it there. I mean, they can narrow the road down, but they have not said they would build us a new barn.
But are you fine with them having a sixty-foot right-of-way all the way through?
I'm fine, yeah. As long as they build me a new barn, I don't care what y'all do up there. I mean, you can make it sixty, you can make it forty.
Can be out to the statement, it's not us doing it, it's the railroad doing it. You're right, we're, we're being asked to approve.
Right.
Commissioner Pace, would you consider tabling this issue so that you could further discuss that with them and see if this is a viable option?
No.
Okay.
I don't, I don't have any objections if they build us a new barn.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Moss, we appreciate it. We have, we had a, a motion and second before us, your comment is? You wish to withdraw that motion. I assume the second is also withdrawn, then I would entertain a motion of your choice. You wish to move to table this item until we can get with the railroad and find out what their options are, or what's your pleasure?
I think that would be a good idea. The motion to table it until we find out what the railroad has or plans, what they've offered, Ms. Moss.
I thought that they had, you know, speak of, that they had offered to build the barn, and that's why.
Yeah, that was a reason. A long time ago they did, then they changed their mind and said they were not. They jutted that road out like that so they did not have to. And all the talks we've had of recent is no, no new barn.
Okay. Then you wish to make a motion that we table this item?
Yes.
All right, I have a motion that we table. Do I have a second? I have a motion, a second. We table this item. All those in favor? My motion does pass. We are gonna table the item and get some more information to you. Item number ten is discuss proposed health plan amendment concerning personnel issue with Brinson Benefits representatives under Texas Government Code five-five-one point zero-seven-four. We are now going to go into closed session because this is a personnel matter. And so those of which would not be here during a closed session, you may excuse yourselves, and we will let you know when we come back.
It's no big deal, I can catch you later. I just wanna ask you something about May the seventeenth. We got a schedule or something. I can catch you later. It's not a big deal, we got until May seventeenth, it's a long time.
Just a minute. Hang on just a minute. See if I can do this. All right, it is now ten thirteen on January thirty first, and we are now in closed session to hear some information brought to us by our representatives of Brinson Benefits. Demetri, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So we're here today to, we want to bring a recommendation to you all regarding habilitative services for your health plan. We currently have a situation in which one of your members has a dependent who is receiving habilitative services. And by that, I mean, this child is undergoing occupational therapy, speech therapy, and physical therapy about once a week for a condition that they have. And we're requesting and asking that you all amend the plan as of ten-one to cover twenty visits per year. Twenty visits per year would be less than five thousand dollars. And we've already spoken to the reinsurance carrier about this before we brought it to the court to get their thoughts and concerns on the risks potentially to the plan. And the reinsurance carrier is fine with this as long as we keep it under five thousand. We can't put a dollar limit on it, but we can put a limit, a visit limit on it. So we're recommending twenty visits. As of ten-one of this year, ten-one of fourteen, when your plan renews, habilitative services are going to be covered fully under the Affordable Care Act anyway. So it's coming, and there won't be a limit or anything on it at that time. So we're asking from ten-one of thirteen through ten-one of fourteen that the court allow twenty visits of habilitative therapy.
Demetri, can you give us some idea how many visits this particular individual has had to this point?
Yeah, yeah. So this has been going on actually since two thousand and twelve, and the claims have been denied, as they should have been, under the plan. But in two thousand and thirteen, we had about thirteen thousand dollars in claims that were incurred. And we're not asking that those be covered, we're only asking that the ones from incurred after ten-one this plan year be covered.
Again, my question is, what is the level of frequency? And the reason I'm asking is if we approve this, basically we're approving up through October of this year. Is the expectation we are, by approving twenty visits, that's gonna cover their needs? Or are they gonna run through those needs and then have a problem?
They're gonna run through the, they're gonna run through the needs. It's currently not a covered service, but the reinsurance carrier, and going back and talking to the reinsurance carrier, if we were to open the plan up to cover their needs, then the reinsurance carrier is not going to hold the rights from the renewal of ten-one of thirteen. There's, there's just too much exposure to the plan. So...
And...
Who dictate, who dictates how many times they're supposed to go? Was a doctor telling them to go? Said to...
They have doctors, they have doctors' orders. Typically, these types of services are covered by school, once a child starts school. But at this point, the child's three. So...
And, and as a general rule, plans, fully insured plans and self-funded plans today do not cover habilitative services. They cover rehabilitative, but these are being used to prevent regression of the child, which is not considered habilitative. It's remain re, it's considered ha. However, again, healthcare reform or Affordable Care Act mandates that all plans everywhere, all over the country will pay at the limit of beginning ten-one of fourteen, so...
How has our plan been addressing these issues as they've gone for these services and submitted these claims? Have we been turning them down?
They've turned, they've been denied.
There, there was twenty-nine hundred dollars worth of claims that were paid in error due to a system conversion at Health First. And that was prior to this plan year at ten-one of thirteen, so we would recommend that we're just not even gonna address that. It happened prior to this plan year. I don't think that we should request that money back.
Should have to get it from the patient.
You would have to get it.
The member would have to pay.
So the best that we could do with the reinsurance carrier is to get five thousand dollars worth of visits covered, which would come to maybe about twenty visits, according to our calculations.
If we were to consider exceeding that, what is our reinsurance carrier talking about in terms of penalty to the county?
That would be paid then, that would be considered outside of your stop loss. So it means that if, if that child or any, any employee, because at this point, once you allow it for one, it's allowed for all. So if any person's exceeded that twenty visit limit, it's paid outside of your stop loss, which means that you, the county, are picking up one hundred percent of it.
It would never track toward any of your stop loss deductives.
Right.
I know this is an ongoing problem. I've got a niece that lives in Mineola, and she has been going to Paris, Texas every day, nearly every day for years. And this little girl was, I don't know the situation, but they have two different people come in there twenty-four hours a day.
It can be very costly.
Yeah.
At this point, there's nothing. And they have contacted our, how this even came to light for us is that the member, of course, called the Purple Card.
Sure.
To get assistance with it. And Purple Card, of course, brought it to our attention, and then we began working on it first, and then we began working with the reinsurance carrier. And at this point, the member has been told, you know, to simply just wait, that we're looking at, we're looking into it.
Okay, Commissioners, have you any further questions of what the issue? So what I'm hearing is you as our advisors are advising us to extend it for twenty visits, limit it at that through the end of this fiscal year, and then we're gonna be having to add it to our coverage subsequent to that, no matter what.
That's exactly right. With no limitations as of ten-one of fourteen. But as of right now, really the only thing that you can do, and that we would recommend that you do, is to allow twenty visits.
But again, if we allow twenty visits, any visits they've already taken are gonna be offset against that? Are they getting twenty visits from now forward?
It would be from ten-one.
From the, from the day that they go into the plan, we would have to have an amendment to the plan.
Do we have any idea of how many visits they've had to this point?
Yeah, it sort of goes in spurts, and their physical therapy is less often than the speech therapy, for example, or facial therapy even less. But anywhere from once a month to three a week. And the cost of those visits are anywhere from a hundred and seventy-five on the low side to what, two oh eight?
Well, they go from, we have explanations of benefits that reflect anything from a hundred and five dollars per visit to two hundred and eighty dollars per visit, depending on what they're having done.
So... And, and they are going out of network. So they would have some benefit, but not full benefit. But they're...
They're often, you go outside network.
They are. Some things better than nothing. Which is kind of my problem.
Does our network provide that same, any service out there?
Um, it's my understanding, and I, I haven't talked to the mother, but it is my understanding from looking at the claims that these were there because that their pediatrician recommended, and the family chose to go with those because they want the best for their child, and they feel like that's the best. So you probably do have physical therapists within your number, but they've just chosen not to seek care for them.
This child has a rare syndrome that, it could be that the specialist that she's seen are specialists who, who work with this specific type of syndrome. It's rare, what this child has.
Is this the type syndrome that is likely to dissipate at some given point, or is this a lifelong issue?
It's likely lifelong. Most often lifelong. Could dissipate, but most likely lifelong. And, and the, the thought process in this particular situation, again, with habilitative, is we've gotten this child to the best level they can expect at this point in this child's life. And so rather, the thought process is without these therapies, then she regresses and goes backwards. And so you're constantly sort of taking one foot forward, three back, one foot... Whereas if you can give her this, at least some, this habilitative treatment, then she sort of stays even throughout the stages of her life.
As of right now, we're not paying any.
Right.
So we'll pay for twenty visits, is what you're saying?
Until this fall, then we're gonna be paying for all of them.
As of ten-one, we'll go back to the beginning of the plan year, and anything that's been denied will be addressed.
But the twenty visits that they're, that they're gonna, that if, if we agree to it, they've already been used up for the past, so basically they're getting nothing?
I didn't technically count them, but I'm sure they're pretty close to being used up since ten-one. There seemed to be a lot of activity at the end of twenty thirteen for whatever reason. So doesn't mean that it wouldn't slow down some now and speed back up, but there's roughly nineteen hundred dollars that are just sitting there that have been denied, but, which again, is why the parent brought this to our attention to say, what the heck?
And they will be subject to deductible and co-insurance.
Yeah.
And to your point, you know, have they already been paid? If the member's already paid it, then the member will be reimbursed. And if the member hasn't paid it, well then we can pay the doctor.
Or the member may say, I've already paid it, it's out of my life, you know, we'll just start from the, I'll start turning him in this day forward. However, they get to the twenty visits, that's how they get to it.
All right, have, have any further questions, Commissioners? You do understand that in a closed session, we cannot make a decision. What is your recommendation? We have as our next item, a consider of approval of proposed health plan amendment provided by Brinson. Is that sufficient to cover, or how specific are you recommending we make that motion?
We would recommend that the county health plan be amended to cover twenty habilitative visits. Per year.
Now, we don't know, of course, this is totally out of, we don't know in a regular year how much it would cost.
We don't know, but the point is?
You're gonna pay it no matter what.
At this point, we can't, you know, if it was twenty thousand, we can't do it.
Well, I know, I know that. I'm just talking about next year when we have to deal with it.
Oh, yeah. It's just gonna be, it'll be covered, like, just like mental nervous conditions or any other condition as of ten-one of fourteen. And the reinsurance carrier, the underwriters, will calculate that risk when they come up with premium, with the premiums for next year. I will say that it's not rehabilitative services are typically, you see those a lot. You know, people can just ride that physical therapy pony to death when it comes to like a back injury or something like that. Habilitative services, that's a little bit more of a rare duck, so that's why we're here. Lots of people wanna go back to regain what they've lost, but most people aren't trying to maintain what they have.
So if we go back into session and we make a motion or one of the, court chooses to consider a motion, it would consider approval of the proposed health plan amendment provided by Brinson Benefits to cover twenty habilitative services through nine-thirty-fourteen, be sufficient?
Yes.
So you're gonna read that out? So we don't have to...
I will read that out, somebody's gonna make that motion, yeah.
I'm missing something here. These, this, the one that you're talking about right here, that's already had so many sessions already. So if we, if we make this decision, is this gonna backpedal, you know, what, what they've done? Are, are they gonna start now and have their twenty sessions?
No, what's gonna happen, John, what's gonna happen is they've already incurred most of this, the majority, but they haven't paid them, they can't pay them. We're gonna pay them, but we're also informing them, this, our willingness to pay only goes to this point. If you choose to go past that, it's on you until next fall. And that, therein lies the problem. And this is just gonna be the first of, God only knows how many issues we're gonna deal with, because this is a mandate of...
That's exactly right. The Federal Government.
Affordable Care Act.
And it's, and it's not something that even self-funded plans can be, you can't limit as your ten-one.
Right.
Every insured American in the country has that right.
Does that answer your question, John? That's what I'm...
Well, you know, I've always been to your, your insurance, always good as your agent. My, my thing is, and I might be listening this wrong, but if I, if I bought an insurance in good faith, that this insurance was gonna take care of my needs when the, when it came up, and then they come back and say, well, you know, you bought it, but, you know, it's gonna cost us too much, and so we're gonna stop you here, what do you don't, you know, it's on... I'm missing something here, you know?
All insurance plans, but whether they're fully insured or self-funded, have some, they don't, for example, they don't pay for cosmetic surgery. I can't go get a breast augmentation just for the heck of it. They don't, there are certain things that just aren't covered. And up until the Affordable Care Act, habilitative services have just been one of those things that generally has not been covered. Now chiropractic visits were limited, physical therapy for adults who, you know, fell off a roof and hurt your back were limited. I mean, there's lots of things within an insurance policy that have always been limited. It was never just a free-for-all. So it's not as though you're just picking this one thing out and saying... thing out and saying, "This is all we can afford, that's all you can have." Does that make sense?
Gotta be careful not to go above the stop loss. And therein lies the problem, John. You have to remember, it's not that we're choosing not to try to give this individual as much coverage as we can, as long as she needs it. There are consequences to every...
I understand.
Every hurdle we pass. This is just a hurdle, and we're putting in the road and saying, you know, try and limit it up to this hurdle until we get past the end of the year, and then we're gonna be dealing with this no matter what.
And next year, we're gonna be paying it no matter what if they do.
Oh. Well, when I listen to this, I think about when I bought my first house insurance, my agent come in, told me everything was covered, and the turn I had come to, flipped a little barn over. So, I called my agent over, and I said, "It's my barn covered. You don't have a barn policy." But the man that sold me the insurance said it was, and I lost, you know?
Or you don't have fine insurance, or you don't have mold in it.
That's why they have fine print in there.
Right.
Well, and again, you can take some comfort in the knowledge that the reason we're addressing this issue is because this employee, their child, has caused this issue to arise, and what we're trying to do is address it as a court, the best we can, as long as we can...
To give them as much as we can.
Give them as much as we can without taxing everyone else. And that's kind of the way it always works. Okay, does anyone have any further comments? Does our...
I guess my...
...wanted legal advice? We're over here, have any comments?
Yeah. My only comment is, I think that the human resource person ought to be involved in these meetings like this. My comment.
And I agree, in all due respect, other Kathy, she's also got a hundred people in her office right now screaming, "Give me my paycheck."
Well, and this... And your employee is working with our Purple Card.
Right.
So, Purple Card has developed a personal relationship, actually, with this family, and Purple Card will be going back to them and letting them know that 20... Yeah, that 20 visits...
And HR has been involved.
And HR's been involved.
You know, we called and said, "Hey, just so you know, you may have this special old employee in your office."
I agree, I still...
Yeah, I got it.
I agree, I still make the comments. She should be in the...
Right, and that's understood. Okay, is there any other questions? All right, it is now 10:34, and we're going to close this closed session of Wood County Commissioners Court, and we'll be going back into open session. And thank you, ladies, appreciate it.
Just leave that on Parker, so you don't stick around for it.
It is now 10:34 on the morning of January 31st, and we are going to go back into open session, Wood County Commissioners Court. We have one item on our agenda, and it is Consider Approval of Proposed Health Plan Amendment provided by Brinson Benefits, and this is to cover 20 habilitative services through 9/30 of 14. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Second. A motion by Commissioner Holland, second by Commissioner Pace, that we make that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
My motion does pass. Seeing no other items on our agenda, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move.
A motion by Commissioner Pace, second by Commissioner Shirley, that we stand adjourned. All those in favor?
Aye.
My motion does pass. We are adjourned.